Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight? Oh, that was sad. How's everybody tonight? I know it's a holiday after a holiday. It really stinks to have that, but hey, we're here. We're going to reconvene our meeting at 6:30. What time is it? 6:31 PM. And we're starting our regular scheduled council meeting. And the first thing we're going to do is we are going to do Pledge of Allegiance. And we have tonight, we are very pleased to have once again one of our proud veterans, Is Bozeth Burgos, US Air Force Sergeant, E-5 SSG, conduct the Pledge of Allegiance for us tonight. Mr. Burgos, if you please.
Sir.
Just stand right here. Good evening. All active military, veterans, first responders, and law enforcement will render a hand salute. All others place your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Staff Sergeant? Staff Sergeant, correct?
Staff Sergeant.
Oh, right. The City of Laverne certificate recognition presented to Is Bozeth Burgos. The certificates presented on behalf of the Laverne City Council to US Air Force Staff Sergeant Is Bozeth Burgos with sincere gratitude and appreciation for his dedicated service to our country. God bless you, sir, and your family.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Casse Fagita.
Here, sir.
Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lau.
President.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here.
All present, sir.
We have presentations tonight. Tonight, one presentation update on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government's 2023 Services and Programs. I would like to introduce Executive Director Marissa Krieter, who will be reporting along with slide presentation. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Hi. Well, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to present. I have a whole bunch of people from the COG with me, which tells you how much we all love working for the COG and how incredible it is. And this is the first presentation we're doing for all 31 of our cities, so it's very special. I think it's so great to be able to work somewhere where I love the people that I work for and with and the work that we do. So this is just going to be a brief presentation of some of the things that we're doing, but I really can't get into all the details. We're doing so many different things. So thank you again. I do want to acknowledge that Mayor Hepburn is our new COG president, starting July 1st, and we just really appreciate him so much. And I also just want to also acknowledge, oh, where'd he go? The C-Major, or your C-Major Ken, is an amazing partner. He's been so incredible to work with, so I really want to acknowledge him as well. And this is just, again, a quick overview of all the great stuff that we're doing. So, there we go. Oh, and here we go. So here's our leadership. As I mentioned, Mayor Hepburn is our president, and then we have, we are well represented. Ed Reese from the City of Clemar is our First Vice President. April Verlato from the City of Arcadia is our Second Vice President. And our new incoming Third Vice President is Corey Moss from the City of Industry. I just kind of organized this, again, it's a very high-level overview of all the different kinds of programs and things that we do. I know a lot of people don't know what the COG does, isn't familiar with us. I'm going to touch on a whole lot of things, but if there's a program you're interested in, you can always contact me afterwards, or I'm happy to come back another time and go into more detail. So I'm going to fly over a whole bunch of presentations all at one time. So one of the first things, oh, there we go. I think that is a really great quality about the COG, is our ability to work together and use limited resources to help cities implement programs. And this is especially important for our numerous, unique, and small communities. We have 31 cities, as I mentioned, and two supervisory districts. So as you all know, there are many state mandates that come down, and it can be very challenging, especially for our smaller communities, to be able to implement those in a cost-effective manner. So there's a whole list of programs and different things we're working on, from the areas of housing, food recovery, watershed management, that really highlight the ways in which our cities are able to come together and utilize their limited resources. A really cool program that the City of Laverne is a part of is our SB 743 implementation. If that sounds familiar to you, that is a bill that changed the way in which the impact of development was calculated from a vehicle's miles, from a level of service to vehicle's miles traveled. And that was, again, challenging for cities to be able to implement that and do all of the technical work that was necessary. So Laverne, along with 26 other cities, came together, and the COG is managing a contract. And those cities have been able to implement the requirements of that legislation for about 20% of the cost of if they were to do it independently. Additionally, we have been extremely successful in securing state and federal funding. Two things that I want to highlight that Laverne is actively involved in is our Fire Prep SGB, which helps residents plan and prepare for wildfires and to maximize safety and minimize the loss of property and lives. And then additionally, I know you all have heard a lot about SGB Care, which is Alternative Mobile Crisis Program. And you all just approved an MOU to participate in that program in June, and so we're looking forward to launching that in the fall. And that's some photos from different check presentations and the launch of our CARE program in the City of South Pasadena. Okay. This is the time for my fun fact, is that the COG is the only COG in LA County that also has a construction authority. And my extra fun fact is that Mayor Hepburn is the only person to simultaneously serve as the President of the COG and the Chair of the Capital Projects Committee, so we're keeping him super, super busy. It's crazy that he's doing both of those things. It's incredible. But we are starting, we manage many, many large capital projects. One thing that you may be seeing on your drive is we are working on the 5760 interchange project. So we are completing the first phase of that, which is the Diamond Bar Golf Course improvements, which then allowed us to have the additional land that we needed to do the improvements. If you've been on that interchange and you've been scared for your life, we are working on it, and hopefully it will be a lot safer. It is a huge, major, major project, $400 million project that we're working on. We also have Fairway Drive Grade Separation recently opened in City of Industry. If you want to drive through that grade separation and see what a great improvement that has made in terms of safety. And then, oh, I also forgot to mention, another example of that is our wonderful 626 Golden Streets event that we had with your city, along with the cities of San Dimas, Pomona, and Clermont back in April. I love doing those community events. And I do want to just quickly shout out, we have wonderful staff at all the cities that we work with. And at the City of Laverne Lieutenant Leeper and your Community Service Director Yvonne were incredible. They made my day when there was so much stress going on with the event. They were great problem solvers and such incredible partners. I want to thank them. And hopefully you just had the most fun that you could have on that day. And then something else that I'm really proud of is our work to help our most vulnerable residents. So this includes our street waste outreach programs that are implemented by Lakata. I know you all are probably very familiar with our service provider Lakata. They do incredible, incredible work. And additionally, through our regional housing trust that Laverne is also a part of, we have built and we operate three homeless shelters in the cities of Montebello and Baltimore Park, serving 105 individuals and families. And I think it's just, again, incredibly meaningful to me that we're able to literally keep people alive and provide them with hope and dignity. And that's, if you want to ever come out to one of the shelters and see the work that we're doing, it's really life-changing. And then additionally, there's a small picture on the bottom right over there. In addition to providing housing and all different types of street-based outreach, we have our SGB Works program, and that is a super cool program that we have, where we provide job training and wraparound services. And we have two different populations that we serve. We serve both the residents at our homeless shelter, and then the photo there is our transition age youth. If you're familiar with God's Pantry in the City of Pomona, they're our service writer for our transition age youth. And so that photo there includes Mayor Hepburn and our other leadership. And that was our first group of nine participants that completed their workforce training with God's Pantry, and it's really exciting, something cool that they're doing. We have a bike share program. They're learning to build bikes and do bike maintenance. So our goal there is to, again, help youth ages 17 to 25, help them get employment and kind of have long-term success in their lives. And again, if you're interested in coming to any of the shelters or to come to see our workforce program, we're happy to set that up. This is a really mind-blowing number. So last year, we were able to secure $74 million for our programs. Something was really exciting. We received $30 million, for example, for one of our grade separation projects. But our projects range in size. So we have our smaller programs, like our workforce program is about a million-dollar a year program, and we have our giant grade separation programs. But we work really, really hard, and I do want to acknowledge Ricky Choi, who's our Director of Government and Community Relations. He is incredible and a very, very persuasive grant writer. So he is a huge part of being able to secure all that money, so I want to thank him for that. And this is just a kind of a highlight of some of the tangible results of what that money is used for. So as I mentioned, we've served over 2,800 people experiencing homelessness in the valley. We relaunched Go SGB, which is our bike share program. We started work on the 5760 and our workforce program. So, you know, this just keeps coming. Every year, we're doing more, but I'm really proud of the things that we're doing. And next year is going to be even more exciting. So that is a picture from our Fairway Grade Separation Project, Fairway Drive Grade Separation Project, so that opened in early July. We will be breaking ground on two additional projects, Turnbull Canyon in the City of Industry and the Montebello Corridor Grade Separation Project this year, so we're going to be very busy on the construction side. We're going to be completing the SGB Transit Study, which looks at ways to serve individuals that are most transit-dependent in the San Diego Valley. And then we're going to be launching three regional food recovery hubs, which helps cities with their 1383 compliance, but also helps people that are food insecure. So, oop. Going? I don't know what's happening there. I don't know if I, like, paused it. I don't know, it's stuck. Okay. And so I can just keep talking about what goes to the next slide, but we are working pretty soon, we hope to reopen the Diamond Bar Golf Course, which is, again, part of the 5760 project. And Mayor Hepburn got to see some very exciting photos of sod that is being rolled in by the acre and grass that is growing more. I don't know that much about golf, but it's very exciting. The grass is growing, and the rain was very helpful in making it secure to the ground.
Are you relating me to grass growing? Thank you so much.
No, it is very exciting, and the rain and the humidity has been very helpful in helping adhere the new grass to the golf course, which will help it open. And then, as I mentioned, we are going to be launching SGB Care in the City of Laverne in the fall, so we're really looking forward to that. And my last picture, I just, I was mentioning, this is a wonderful photo, and several people here from the office are in this photo. But this was a build day that we did for a house that we are renting for seniors experiencing homelessness, so we all came together. So I really wanted to close with that photo as a reminder of what a wonderful place it is to work and how happy I am with everything that we're doing. With that, I am done, and thank you so much for your time.
Would you please introduce your staff?
Yes, I can. So I have Katie Ward, our amazing, incredible Administrative Services Manager. I have Caitlin Sims, who is the Manager of Local Programs in the Planning and Programs Department. I have Steph Wong, our Senior Management Analyst, who does everything. Steph Hernandez, our my incredible Executive Assistant. And then Ricky Choi, our Director of Government and Community Relations. So they are so awesome. I'm so thankful that they came tonight.
I just want to say that I've been on the COG ever since I got on council, which is like 2015, and major transformation from what it was to what we are now. And it used to be the ace in the COG, and we merged those two together. And Director Krieter has done an amazing job with her staff, and there's, I actually think there's nothing that they can't do. And I think that the most amazing thing is the fact that with the 34 cities that they cover, along with the two municipalities and then the two supervisory districts, we get a lot of federal, state money, our senators, our Congress. We're very connected, they're very connected, so when we do grade separations or the homeless population, they're doing great things and very happy to be a part of it. But I think we're very fortunate to have them as an arm with San Gabriel Valley, because as the San Gabriel Valley is huge, we work together as a team, and I think that's the most important thing. That's one of the reasons why we discussed having Marissa and staff come out to the cities to say, this is what we do, outreach for grants and things like that. They have, they're basically, as far as I'm concerned, is the San Gabriel Valley think tank. They do everything, and it's very important for our cities, and we'll be able to utilize that. So thank you and your staff. You guys are doing an amazing job, and I'm just very happy to be part of it, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You guys don't have to stay now. Please. You've got families to go to, you've got situations, but thank you guys very much for coming. I give you an A+ even with, you know, our screen messing up on us. Thank you guys very much. Oh, and I want to mention too, as they're exiting, the fact that our staff is working amazing with them, Yvonne Duran, Community Services, our Police Department, our Fire Department, with Acting Chief Gonzalez and Chief Nigg, that we couldn't do the things we do with our homeless outreach without them, and we really thank them. Thank you, guys. Now, announcements of upcoming community events, if anyone wants to move on to upcoming community events, any who wishes to make a brief announcement, future community events at this time. Anybody wish to take the mic? Mr. Gabeldon? Oh, you got it right here, sorry.
Marissa's a tough act to follow, but I'm going to try to do my best for Laverne here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Joe Gabeldon, and I'm here to share with the community a little bit about the Meals on Wheels program and the service we provide to our residents every day. For my part, I serve on the Executive Board as Treasurer, and I also deliver meals once, twice a week. While most folks are probably familiar with the national organization Meals on Wheels, there are many smaller and more local groups who operate at the local level and serve under the Meals on Wheels name. Our chapter specifically and exclusively serves the communities of Laverne and San Dimas and has been doing so for 20 years, since 2003. We are a formal nonprofit group wholly composed of unpaid volunteers who also donate their cost of fuel and vehicle expenses to deliver meals. That's what makes us different. We go to those that have need. We are supported by Hillcrest, who provides meal preparation services to our program, and the food we deliver. Our team delivers meals Monday through Friday, nearly every full week of the year, with only the exception of a couple of holidays. We serve between 900 and 1,100 meals per month and deliver within a coverage area of nearly 20 square miles between the two cities. We primarily serve the elderly, the handicapped, the ailed, and those who might simply be looking for a healthy alternative to supplement their daily dietary needs. No person is refused, and meal ships are available for those who can demonstrate need. We are funded exclusively through donations and the fees collected for each meal. The price of each meal is offered at our cost and charged monthly after services are rendered. To sustain the program and to cover the cost of meals for those in financial need, we rely exclusively on the generosity of the donor community and receive no supplemental funding from any agency. We want to make sure that anyone in our community who has need or is a friend or family member who has need, for our service knows we are here to help. We are also not embarrassed to ask those of you in our community who are in a position to offer some of your treasure to please consider donating to our program so we can continue to provide meals to those who cannot otherwise pay for these meals. It doesn't take many stories here in Laverne or San Dimas of how some folks who are on strict limits of their income, in particular those many years into their retirement, or those most vulnerable to the higher cost of current living expenses, or in one case, a family who waits for the off-month of their bill for the city water, emergency services, and refuse services to free up enough money in that they might catch up with their bill. To realize that there are many in our community with need, very different of the majority of us. Also, some of us may take for granted in our full and busy lives, our team is sometimes the only person whom we serve they may see in their day. If you have interest in our services, joining our team, donating, or just want to learn more about us, please go to www.lvstdmealsonwheels.org, or you can reach out to us at 909-596-1828. On behalf of the Meals on Wheels volunteers, thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Gabeldon.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you off. I just had, one more time for that, the website and the phone number, please.
That's how I was going to suggest.
Okay.
Joe. Yvonne. Give it to Yvonne, and then we'll get it to all of us.
It's on our senior newsletter and our website.
Oh, you got it already on there? Okay. Very good. Anyone else have any announcements?
I do have one announcement, which is simply that we had closed session and that there was no reportable action taken during closed session.
Thank you. Nice announcement. Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Crosby.
Yes, I have an announcement from our Community Services. They're having the City of Laverne's International Night for individuals and families of those with special needs. It's on September 15th. That is a week from Friday, and it's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And their announcement says, "Join us as we celebrate the rich tapestry of cultures that make our community so unique. To ensure you don't miss out on the memorable experience, don't forget to preregister and secure your spot at this extraordinary celebration of diversity, where all are welcome, cherished, and celebrated for their individuality. The event is geared towards individuals ages 3 to 21 and their families. Pre-registration is required to receive a food ticket and can be made from now through Thursday, September 14th, at the Community Services." They did an event a couple weeks ago, a luau dance. That was amazing, and thank you for the volunteers that helped out with that. I know my daughter enjoyed herself at the event and looking forward to all the events from the Community Services. So thank you for helping out our special needs kids, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. Any other council member for any announcements, or anyone in the crowd, announcements? Come on up. Ms. Gallegos.
Hi, good evening. Well, I first wanted to announce that we do have a CASI meeting tomorrow, 5:00, Citrus Room at Hillcrest, all armed and ready. So we'd like to see, you know, as many people there. So 5:00, Citrus Room, Hillcrest, CASI meeting. And then I just also wanted to announce Laverne Beautification Day. Laverne Beautification Day is happening September 9th. Compassionate Laverne, if you haven't heard of this initiative, Compassionate Laverne invites you to come together to beautify our city. And what does that mean? Well, it takes us all to make a community, and when we all come together, we make Laverne even more beautiful. Pick up trash along your daily walk or visit a local park to help clean it up, then share a selfie on social media with the hashtag #beautifylaverne. So that's happening on September 9th, and we all invite you to participate. So thank you.
What time is that? Yvonne?
It's not a time, it's just definitely, it's just a day where we want you to take the initiative, right? To, you know, like, pick up some trash on your walk. I know I walk my dogs three times a day, and, you know, I see some trash along the way, so I pick it up. So we just want you to participate in trying to, you know, help to make the city a little bit cleaner and beautify Laverne. And yeah, anything that you can do. One of the things that I like to do is, there was a person here in this city that, I don't know very much about him, but I know where he hangs out, and he collects cans. So I like to go and help him at Los Flores sometimes and help him to go and, you know, pick out cans and help him, again, just to help him so he can, you know, so he can turn it in and have a little bit of cash in his pocket. Or I'll just go and buy him some water at Circle K. So, so yeah, just anything you can do to beautify Laverne on that day.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Anyone else on announcements?
This week is Smudge Pot for the high school.
And the Smudge Pot is relocated. It is not at Mount SAC, it's at Citrus. So make sure that you all know that. It was switched from Mount SAC, I would reason for, but it is at Citrus at 7:00.
Saturday.
Saturday, the 9th. Correct? Thank you. Councilmember Lau. I'm Mayor Pro Tem Lau. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just a real quick reminder, I know many of you have probably seen the social media posts, but we are involved in the Niagara Water Perk Your Park event. We are third out of nine parks and the only park from California. So if you can vote every day, we ask you to please vote every day, because the top three parks get $75,000 each to beautify and update their park. So Los Flores Park is in the running, we are in third place, and the voting goes until September 18th. So if you need the link, it's on social media, but it's also on our website as well.
So perk your park, don't forget. Also, Taste of Laverne's coming in October, so there'll be more of that being out. And also, that particular week is going to be Restaurant Week, where restaurants will be running specials for residents, so we'll be getting that information out too. But perk your park's really important, extremely important, so we'll get some more information on that. Director Duran, and we'll push it out again. When is that up? When is the final?
September 18th.
Oh, wow, it's coming.
But we're holding strong in third place. Right now, we just have to be in the top three.
We want to be in second or first, so. I like to be, I don't like any chances. Yeah, finishing third in a fourth horse race is not a good thing, you know?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we will.
Yes. If I can also, we are having some problems with our Zoom connection.
Gosh, really?
People can see it from the internet and TV, but Zoom is not working for some reason. We're trying to figure it out. We'll keep it up and try to see if it comes on, but it does not impact the meeting, so.
Okay. Livestream's working. Okay. Our sound's good. That's great. Any other announcements? We will go ahead and close announcements and move to the consent calendar. As a reminder, the consent calendar is considered routine matter and will be enacted by one motion unless pulled for separate discussion. Mr. Domer, was there anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 6, the Public Financing Authority for the EIFD, was pulled by a member of the, by resident.
Okay. Counsel, is there anything you want to pull from the consent calendar for discussion, or? I would take that as a no. Then we will go ahead and.
Motion to approve 135 in the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote, please.
That was approved, 5-0.
We're good?
Mr. Mayor.
You need to recruise yourself.
Yes, I am recusing myself from item number six, as I sit on the Board of Trustees for the University of Laverne, and Dr. Espinoza is an employee of the university.
So thank you. We'll see you back in a minute, or more. So we've had a member of the public pulled out for comment. Do we have that member here present?
Yes. Mr. Bowen, would you like to comment on that item?
Mr. Bowen, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I pulled this for process question. In reading the packet, I saw that this was included on there as one of the consent calendars, and I wondered, personally, I'd never seen it before for the representation. So I went through the, some of the information provided, and I won't read it, but it's on the agenda. It's in your packet on page 74, where it says it was advertised on May 23rd, various websites, public notices, EIFD page, through social media programs, et cetera, et cetera. And only one application was received. That just struck me a little funny, because number one, I come to a few meetings, never heard anything about it. For the last two or three months, I've asked that positions be posted as part of the agenda so that things like this might not be missed by the general public. I then pulled the, the community service application for the candidate, and this is not about the candidate. Very impressive community service application. One thing that struck me was that I then pulled the, um, the community service application for the candidate, and this is not about the candidate. A very impressive community service application. One thing that struck me was that the address of the application, and I filled one of these out before, says the applicant lives at 1950 Third Street in Laverne. Well, that happens to be the university address, and the three references that this person presented were all from University of Laverne at 1950 Third Street. So, one of my questions, process-wise, is, does the personal data sheet, should it be true? And does this person live at the university? If so, then answers my question. If not, if you don't tell the, I won't say you don't tell the truth, but if this is inaccurate, what's the use of the form? So, that's my first question, and I, hopefully, I'll get that answered. But I also went to the May 23rd EIFD, where Mr. Domer said it was published, and quite frankly, if any of you look at it and you can find it, more power to you. I'm looking at it right here, and it says, um, where is it? The posted was on the 23rd, which Mr. Domer refers to, but it makes no mention of a vacancy. In fact, it talks about the city establishing the EIFD. That's all it talks about. And that was on May 23rd, 2023. So, I'm kind of curious, if you search here and it's not on there, where was it? And so, my other question is, are you supposed to be a citizen of, or resident of this city? And if you are, does the person live here? If they don't, are they allowed to be on the committee? What is the, what are the, again, the process, and what are the qualifications? Because there doesn't appear to be any. So, um, I don't know if I can get any of those questions answered, but before we vote on this, I would hope, as we saw with the Planning Commission, when people found out that was, that there was a position open, you reopened it because there was more than, it was like 14 applicants for something this important to our city. There's only one person? That, it just doesn't seem logical. But then again, maybe it is.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. We'll bring it back and have Mr. Domer comment on those.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Uh, we will go ahead and close public comment. We'll bring it up to the dais. Councilmembers, any questions to staff before we go to Mr. Domer to make the explanation?
I would hope that these opportunities, excuse me, I would hope that these opportunities are available for everyone and not just somebody in the know. It surprises me that we would not have noticed that to everybody.
That was actually a conversation I had with Mr. Domer today, was, I saw one applicant, and as we've been through this, we have, we want to make sure that we publicize, we televise, so people can get the information. If someone's interested in this, then they want to have a chance to fill out an application, as Mr. Bowen said. And that was my biggest concern. I saw one person, that's, for me, that's a red flag. We've just, we've been through this already, and I just wanted to make sure that we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, the applications were sent out, the information was sent on our social media, and there truly was only one applicant that did apply. And if that's the case, then I'll let Mr. Domer take it from there. But I do agree with Councilmember Johnson that we're going to have these committees. I want to be people that have the chance to really look at it and apply. I don't care who applies, everybody can apply, you know, and to serve on the city committee. Mr. Domer?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I will call up Eric Shear, who's the Community Development Director, to talk about the qualifications and this particular appointment in place for those issues related to getting more out there. So, we are a victim of doing things as we always have been, especially on these appointments, and we are, you know, making sure that we get them out on more of our social media, on the webpage, extending when we need to, like we did for the Planning Commission. One of the things in taking Mr. Bowen's words about having something on the agenda, what I've worked with city clerk staff to do on our next appointment, when that becomes available, is to have something like a simple consent item. So, it's a receive and file, but it would either have the notice of the appointment or the resignation letter from the other person. It would describe the committee, and it would give the timeframe for when those appointments are available. But if everybody's looking at our agenda, that's one more way of getting this information out there. And we are open to suggestions. So, it is, you know, normally, it's our website, and it could be in one or two different places. It's on the bulletin board here, but I don't know how many people look at the bulletin board. We kick it out on social media through all the different avenues that were there. Next Door is probably our biggest one. But again, I don't know, because I don't live in the city, I don't have the knowledge of, you know, how it comes through on that, so, you know, open to feedback on that. But again, open to more feedback as to how we get these appointments. We want people to be submitting their applications for these appointments. It's better for us when we do have multiple applicants. So, Director Shear can talk about this particular appointment and the qualifications of it.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The, it is correct that this was advertised as we do all of our vacancies. The one difference with this position than all other committees and commissions that the city has is that there is not a residency requirement for this. This EIFD board is very new and unique. You'll notice in the staff report designated, and as Mayor Hepburn knows and Councilmember Crosby knows, we have a, one of the members is a professor at Cal Poly Pomona with no direct ties to the City of Laverne. And so, this applicant does not live in the city. Our form is a generic form that talks about place of residence as the only line to enter an address. In this case, she's employed by the university. That was one of the criteria that was put out on the flyer for the notice of vacancy, that preference would be given to those that live or work in the City of Laverne. But quite frankly, the council has the ability to appoint somebody that does neither, that doesn't live in the city or even work in the city if they felt they were an applicant. I will tell you, when the EIFD was first established, and we put out the same notice of establishing this new board, at that time, we actually had two public members that we were appointing because the county wasn't part of it. When we put out that notification for two open seats of members of the public for the board, we only received two applications. I don't know if it's because of people unfamiliar with what an enhanced infrastructure financing district is, but we did advertise it just the same way as we advertise our Planning Commission vacancy, which obviously, we had more turnout for. The reason why it wouldn't show up on the website for the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District today is those posted notices of vacancies typically are taken off the website once the vacancy opening expires. We don't keep it up after the term, the window expires. So, you wouldn't see it on the city's main page, which is where it was located. It was also located on the specific EIFD page, which would be harder to find, honestly, but the main page where we post all of our vacancies for any commissions or committees had this posted during the window that the position was open for. So, no different than any other vacancies we do. It might just be a lack of interest in it. I don't know the reason, but in this case, we did only receive the one application.
Is there a time sensitivity on this?
Uh, the board meets quarterly, so not particularly. In fact, the next meeting is scheduled for next week. However, we anticipate canceling that for lack of items. So, there is an annual meeting that was done last June. That was a required meeting that we did need a quorum for. So, and obviously, there'll be some training for the new person to bring them up to speed on what the role of the EIFD board is and what we're doing. But I do believe that next week's meeting probably will be canceled for lack of business.
I mean, Zui is a very formidable individual. She has the qualifications for this. But again, at the end of the day, we've been through this before as far as the notice and how it was sent out, and I, I think we need to continue that, as, as Mr. Domer said. We need to be aware that when we send these things out, that if we only have one application, that's probably not a good, you know, indication, although we can, we can appoint. But I don't know, I, like I say, Zui's excellent. There's no question about her capabilities, but at the end of the day, I think we need to make sure that our residents knew that this was out, and we have, you know, this is, this is an important committee as far as what we do, and it's going to become more important as time goes on, as we get closer to the gold line completion, or the A-line. And, uh, I don't know, council, have thoughts?
And just want to make sure clear, can you speak about what, how Laverne is unique in having the EIFD and what it's provided us so far with our enhancements coming to the downtown area too? But the specific piece of that, that you do not have to be a resident, but you have to have influence in Laverne, that's why the, would look more fondly if their place of work was there. That's why the address of the University of Laverne.
Sure. So, first, yeah, Laverne is one of the only cities in the state of California, one of the few cities to have an established EIFD district, and one of the few that have partnered with the county as well that we're located in. We were one, we were the second and the third ever established. So, it is new, and the law isn't as refined as it is for other items, just because it's, it's, you know, eight years old now, roughly. So, the law that established the EIFD wasn't very specific in the requirements for serving on the board as a public member. It's specific about members of the elected officials of the taxing agencies. So, in this case, Laverne and the County of Los Angeles have specific seats, and the council, you know, votes to decide who that is through that process. But the public member is just a resident, or it doesn't even say resident in the law, just a public member. So, there's been some interpretations in other agencies that required it to be a resident of the city, or not even an issue, basically, as long as they live in the state of California, they could serve. And so, as I mentioned, we do have one sitting member that doesn't reside or work in the city, that was appointed by the county, is their appointment for the public seat, one of the two public seats on the board. So, just the law hasn't, hasn't been defined to have that requirement in it. The EIFD, obviously, as you mentioned, we just had a ceremony celebrating the completion of the public improvements at E and Second Streets with lighting, landscaping, sidewalk improvements, infrastructure improvements, and it's really geared towards the future operations of the Metro Light Rail A-lines train. So, it allows us to do projects that are funded with dedicated property tax increment dollars to help improve the area and help, and hopefully, you know, make that investment into that area of the city. So, it's, there isn't a definite requirement for residency, or even employ, as I mentioned, we did put a preferences that would, that we would place a priority on those that live and/or work in the City of Laverne, if we received multiple applications.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think, and council, it's important to understand, this is a weird committee. There's five members.
Thank you.
Well, and not saying anything about the members, because you, yeah.
Unique, unique.
You and Councilmember Crosby are two of the members. The other members are Supervisor Hilda Solis, but typically, one of her staff members appears for her. Dr. Anthony Orlando, who is a member of the public from the county because they're a partner with this, and then we only have one public appointee, and that's the vacant position currently. So...
My last one was actually my neighbor, Ray Skelton, but he was also on the Board of Trustees at the University of Laverne, so filled this spot really nicely. But I just want to make sure that we're, it's, it's not that who we're talking about, it's just the processes. City Manager Domer said, it's just, we want to make sure we follow the process and that give opportunity to many people to apply for that, because this is an important committee, as Councilmember Crosby said. It's really important because it's going to get really important here very soon. There's going to be a lot of monies and stuff. Councilmember Johnson?
I guess, part of the problem that I see is we really don't have a newspaper like we used to have years ago. So, there's no place publicly that we can put it in the newspaper and advertise it. I guess what I would like to see, since it relates directly to the city, and the issue keeps coming up to the city council, that maybe we put it at the end of our agendas, so people that are interested in, in what's going on with the city, see it. That, that should be fairly easy to do, to advertise any openings or potential openings at the end of our agendas.
And I would be very happy to do that. In fact, one of the things which is strange to me is the council members can make comments, there's no city attorney report, there's no city manager report. Sometimes I do pipe in and all that stuff, but if we can add a city manager report towards the end, or even in the beginning, and I can hit these items, because I think it is very valuable to have that information out there.
I think that's a great idea, because we need to continually do that, because people have busy lives, and they always look at the webpage. And sometimes, as we've had in the past, as Mr. Bowen has stated, and we've even had it before with our previous city manager, I said, "We can't find the posting." That was a lot of times like that, where you couldn't find the posting. The position wasn't there. And he even, "Oh, my gosh, it's not here." It's like, okay, come on, you know? But I think moving forward, which we're doing now, I know we're making changes, but I think the biggest thing is, right now, do we want to go ahead and vote on this, or do we want to, is it going to behoove us to push it out another month to try to see if other people want to apply for this?
Thank you, Mayor. One last thing is if we can add or fix this personal data so it can state live or work, and then that way, when we post some of these committees, like, just from my own knowledge as well, let them know what is open to the folks that live here in the City of Laverne, and those that folks that do not live or work in the City of Laverne. So, that way, they know, as a committee, this is, for example, the EIFD, you don't have to live in the City of Laverne, or you might have to work, or not live, or not work, or whatever case might be. But then, on the personal data, if we can clean that up to at least state as far as this home address, people are not comfortable putting a public document like this out there. I get that, but at the same time, maybe you could put live or work in the City of Laverne.
Mr. Domer.
Can we do that?
Absolutely, yeah. We will look at the forms. I was also looking at our notification center where people can, it's notify me on our website. You can put your email address in there to be alerted for the City Manager Newsletter, the different committees and the agendas for the city council and all that stuff. There's an alert center for citywide. I'll look at if there's an appointment list, so if there's an appointment, if you have your name on there, and I do believe you can, like, have all of them checked. I don't think it's a lot of email, but it is, again, another way to get some notification. I do know, you know, way back when, you know, in the, and I know that Daily Bulletin and the Orange County Register are all the Southern California news group, they used to have the little city blibs. They had one page, and they had every little city listed and all that stuff. And that was great, because at that time, in cities, you were able to put out this information that they miss otherwise. So, I do miss local papers, and I think not having beat reporters look at things also brings other dangers. But, yeah, so, again, open to doing anything to make sure that we communicate this better than what we are doing, to making those changes. We can put it on the agenda. We can look at the forum and make sure that we're clear on both, you know, residence and/or business, especially if it's allowed for a commission. And then, you know, maybe checking with our city attorney's office and Eric on eventually, can this committee be reformed? Does it need to be in its current standing, or could it have more resident members? So.
Anybody in the audience that would have wanted to apply for one of these, for this position?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we should re-fly it.
Then I think that answers our question.
I think we should re-fly it.
Director Shear, is it going to, you said that we'll probably cancel for no business. You would have to fly it within seven days, and then you would fly it for three weeks, or?
Approximately about probably.
So, a month, by the time you fly it and make a notification, and then bring it out to the public again. I, it sounds like, well, we need to, we make an alternate motion then on that?
Oh, yes.
Well, we'd have to make an alternate motion to say we want to fly it again.
So, what I'd like is a motion to basically re-fly, well, to...
Re-advertise.
Yeah, re-advertise the application, the vacancy. Eric, when's the next meeting scheduled? Is it January?
Well, the next regular meeting would be next week, which we plan on...
Yeah, we're going to cancel that.
After that, it would be in December.
Okay, in December. So, we do have time to have, like, an extended for a week or so.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I would like to make that motion to re-fly this position.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
And that passes 4-0 with Mayor Protim Lau recusing herself.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Thank you, staff. We can bring Councilmember Lau back and don't touch your mic, please. Does she too?
But she has to announce it.
Okay.
If no written protests have been filed against the proposed annexation territory Area 23-1 into the Community Facilities District Number 11-1, we continue with procedure below, but we have some to recuse.
Yes.
Mr. Howling. That was supposed to be you.
That's okay. Yeah, before we conduct the staff report, let's have the city attorney and then we'll excuse our members who need to be recused.
So if you want to go ahead and explain your recusal, that would be helpful.
I, I have to recuse myself, I own property within 500 feet of the project.
And I have to recuse myself as a member of the Board of Trustees for the University of Laverne.
You're just going to snack in there.
I'm just kidding.
Well, that was easy. Gosh, you're late.
We have a bad mic.
I'm sorry, guys, we are falling apart up here. We're going to go in the parking lot, we're just going to use a megaphone? I think it's a lot easier.
And Mr. Mayor, with that, City Engineer Cody Howling is here for the staff report to lead us off and then at times the city attorney will jump in because this is a technical item.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, because our conversation today, it's like multiple items on here that we have to do, but we're going to take it in one motion. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
There will ultimately be four different, well, you have a script in front of you.
I do, but that means nothing.
Okay, so we'll go through it step by step. Hopefully, there will be multiple votes, multiple resolutions, et cetera.
Right.
Assuming everything goes according to plan, we'll find out.
Mr. Howling, I think it's your.
Yes, okay, so I'm going to just briefly retouch for council and everybody in the room what 11-1 is and what exactly this annexation is. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. We began this public hearing back on August 21st, but because of a quorum issue, we had to continue it to this evening. This action is the annexation of new territory into Community Facilities District 11-1. Community Facilities District, or commonly referred to as CFD 11-1, was created in 2011. The basis for this district was to fund special benefits experienced or provided to properties that triggered a higher level of fire suppression. So in simple terms, the easiest way to put it is the larger buildings needed bigger equipment and more fire staff. And so thus, as back in 2011, the anticipated future of higher, taller buildings, increased density, the CFD was created to, to fund that. So specifically to CFD 11-1, the basis for how that was developed was to make sure that the fire department is complying with fire standard number 1710, which basically covers the ladder truck and the staff for that ladder truck. Fast forward to today, this evening, so we have the continuation of a public hearing for this annexation. The territory specifically being considered for annexation is the Brandywine Project located at 3717 Fruit Street, which is just, just up the street here, I'm sure everybody's seen it. Like I mentioned, I think it's, it's kind of obvious as those are taller buildings and what is typical and what certainly was prior, the, the use there, and so thus, that project was conditioned to be annexed into the project and so that brings us here to tonight. Yeah, to say this is a complicated process is maybe an understatement, so we'll, I'll try to just kind of summarize it and we'll hit it piece by piece as we get through the evening. So the first item of the recommendation is to continue to conduct the public hearing. If there is a situation where there is no majority protest, you have item 1A and 1B there, then we would move on to adopting, which is, I'm on item number two now, Resolution 23-58 calling for a special election for the annexation. This will be the first of two ballots tonight, the second ballot will be the levy if we make it that far. So at this point, that concludes my report. I am available for any questions that council might have.
Council, any questions? Just sorry, clarification.
Yes.
And because why Mayor Pro Tim Lau, University of Laverne is also part of this CFD?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Crosby, those are important details. So currently, the CFD has just a few parcels, we don't have a ton of really tall development, but University of Laverne obviously sticks out as one of those sites that has that. Because the University of Laverne is a property owner, they also have a ballot, which is the first phase of this, this, this action tonight is to get the ballot or the feedback of all the existing property owners to whether or not they will accept the annexation of the new territory. This annexation doesn't impact their assessment, but that's how the law is written and it's based out of the Melrose Act of 1982, so.
Any other questions? I'll open up a public comment. Is there anybody wishing to submit a protest or any process being filed with the city? Any protest? Maybe we just speak on this item? Well, it's exciting.
So for those listening at home, there have been no protests filed?
No protests filed, thank you. Would I close the public comment? And any other discussion?
So at this stage, we're now moving on to item number two, and so it's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 23-58 calling special election on annexation into Community Facilities District Number 11-1 of the city of Laverne.
I so move to adopt Resolution Number 2358.
Second.
Vote please.
And that motion was approved 3-0 with Johnson and Lau recused.
All right then, we're moving on to item number three. So at this stage, it's recommended that council direct the assistant city clerk to open the annexation ballots and receive and file a canvas statement results of the election. So we'll go ahead and move forward with that.
Okay, we received four ballots, and if you just give me a minute here so I can open them, I'll get you a tally in just a second.
Yeah. Is this an old way or what? Wow. What do they say, dial up?
Yeah.
So while this is happening, I will explain the process. So this is the streamlined process.
Oh.
We authorized an election, thank you for authorizing the election, and now we're actually conducting the election.
With ballots.
So because nobody protested, you're allowed to do both at the same time. So anticipation of there being no protests, we've already solicited the votes.
So if there was a protest, someone to protest tonight, then we would have had to go back to the people.
We would not be conducting this election right now.
Thank you.
Bottom line, wouldn't happen. Four out of.
Oh, so there were no protests.
Yeah.
So we get, so that's the reason we're having an election now, so we're counting the ballots, so there are four individuals or four votes that have been sent in and we'll hear with the results of that. Oh, four, I believe. There were five authorized.
This guy's got everything in him. Okay, ballot. Okay, we received one, two, three, four, five, and I'll vote it yes.
That's easy.
Oh, four. Okay, the last one is for the levy.
I think we say that one more time.
All right. Four ballots were received and all of them said yes to the, what is it, to the?
To the annexation.
To the annexation.
So then, do I have, now I can go to motion, I don't need to go to?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2359 declaring the results of the special election on the annexation of Area 23 dot 1 to the Community Facility District 11-1?
I so move to adopt Resolution Number 2359.
Second.
I'll second that.
Vote please.
Mr. Mayor, that item was approved 3-0 with Johnson and Lau recused.
Great, thank you. We move on to the next item?
All right, we're almost through. So the annexation has been approved, the next step is to actually get the new territory that has been annexed into the CFD to also approve the actual levy. So that is the second ballot that we're going to have tonight. So we're on number four and so the recommendation is for council to adopt Resolution Number 23-60 calling the special election into levying the special taxes on the newly annexed area of 23-1 of Community Facilities District Number 11-1.
I'm sorry, I think we have to note too that more than 50% of the voters have approved that too, so.
Yes, and that's a good point. I also want to highlight that each ballot is weighted by land on, land area. So, so even though we had a resounding yes for those ballots returned, it's even more significant than just the four there because, because of that weight to the ballots, so. So then we would be moving on to item, we're on number four, calling resolution, considering Resolution Number 23-60 calling for the election into levying the special taxes.
I move to approve or adopt Resolution Number 2360 calling special election into the levying of special taxes on newly annexed area of the 23-1 of Community Facilities District Number 11-1 of the city of Laverne.
Second. Vote please.
Mayor, that vote passed 3-0 with Johnson and Lau recused.
You're already getting rummy too. Great. Next item?
All right. We're on number five. So at this stage, we're going to repeat what we just did but for a different levy, so the recommendation is to direct the city, the assistant city clerk to open the assessment ballot received and file a canvas statement for the results of the election and that the city council adopt Resolution Number 23-61 declaring the results of the special election and directing the recording of notice of special tax lien.
Okay, we received one ballot for the assessment of the levy and it's a yes.
Well, that's easy then.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Because we've only received one ballot and last one we received four out of five, now we receive one out of five, or how many is that out of?
So, so it's one out of one in this situation.
Okay.
So this is the newly annexed parcel voting on whether they're going to pay the assessment.
Which is the builder.
Okay.
The builder voting on.
So now this is the property saying it's going to come in?
Yes.
The Melrose.
Thank you for that clarification, because I think some people thought that was five as well, it was supposed to be.
I don't know, if they're, they're confused, I'm, this, this is a lot of strange stuff here. Mr. Howling?
I.
Do we?
So I think we're moving on to at least council's consideration of that Resolution Number 23-61.
Motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 23-61 declaring the results of the special election and directing the recording of notice of special tax lien.
Second?
Second.
Vote please.
Mayor, that item passed 3-0 with Johnson and Lau recused.
Mr. Howling, our last item, is that correct?
I think so. All right, well, yeah, we are complete. Mr. Porter, do we, do we?
Yeah, yes. So, and Mr. Mayor, yes, that is a tortuous process, it is set up under the Community Facilities District Acts of 1982 and some other ones that are out there. 11-1 was set up as the city engineer talked about to fund fire apparatus vehicle equipment, personnel for the ladders to get to these taller ones. We are currently looking at the potential of forming another Community Facilities District that would potentially replace this one, make it a little bit more streamlined and easier to do. Back when they passed this one, probably should have had some different parameters put in place which would have made tonight easier.
You think?
Yes. But again, also, it's not something that is done on a regular basis, so I don't know the last one done, but only five have done, have been done. And each time under this current 11-1, so if another property comes in six months from now, 12 months from now, then we'll have to go back to the five current members and ask their election to allow the next one in and then you'll have that person then vote on assessing themselves. So, yeah, state law sometimes is cumbersome to follow, but we do follow it and appreciate you guys working with us and the public learning through this too.
Thank you. Mr. Howling, thank you very much, appreciate your patience in explaining that to us. What's that? Bring them back in, they're coming to get them. That was interesting.
That wasn't streamlined for me.
I know. Councilmember Crosby, need a break?
Great job.
Welcome, welcome. Now we move to our last public hearing on amending the 2023-24 comprehensive fee schedule on fire department related fees. Mr. Domer, please introduce staff member who will be reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call up Fire Chief Chris Nigg and, well, he's going to stay in the corner and Fire Marshal Fred Stenhouse is going to be up here tonight.
Good evening, sir. You look sharp tonight. Look at him, he's ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and city manager and the public. Thank you for this opportunity, first of all. I'm here to discuss about the comprehensive fee schedule for the fire department's fire prevention fees. I kind of give you guys a history here, this, for the past two months, I've been here for three months now, past two months I've been here, I've discovered that some fees weren't, weren't being collected properly or to the point of where we weren't collecting enough funds to fully fund that fee. And so in the last year, we turned our impact of, of looking into this for the past year, we've had a year of findings already here. So we've previously, under the Fire Chief, Chief Chris Nigg, we had a year of one person just working in Fire Prevention Bureau. It was a fire marshal and that was it. As of now, working for our bureau now, it's myself and one other inspector. So we have discovered that the fees weren't being recorded properly and accurate to fully fund that fee. So for an example is that we've discovered that our inspection process, plan check process and how we collect those fees wasn't enough to cover the fully burden rate for those items. One of them wasn't, for an example, was that we weren't covering the cost for the fire inspections after it comes out of plan check. So once the, once the item comes out of plan check, it goes into the building side of it and then when they call for the inspections, those fees weren't being accounted for. So now that they're inside the new fee schedule and comparatively, there would give them so many different inspections types to get to that spot. With that said, I've also checked in with other cities as well and we're comparison across the board with other cities and comparable to what their fee schedule would look like. So with that being said, I would say that it'd be a recommendation to move this item forward, to approve that, to adequately cover the cost of cost recovery and time and material for all of the fees that we looked at today. And in front of you, I've done. And in front of you, I've done a lot of homework and put a lot of time into this thing, and been pretty passionate about getting that across the board, you guys, and analyzing everything, and talking with finance, and it's all there to show you time and material, and based off of what our current fees are today. Even if we were to use our fee now, our old fee schedule only covered the costs of the previous inspectors and what they were here for. Now that I'm here, we have some new fees involved in the things, in the process of how we do things, would trigger that. So I would ask you guys to move forward with this, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
First of all, I want to thank you, as we have had a discussion, but this was a discussion of mine when I first got on council, is are we properly charging fees, and are we compensating correctly to be able to pay for it? Not a lack of it, and making sure that the city is recouping the funds, and we're not spending money on things like that. And I really appreciate, this is very detailed, I appreciate the redlining, I appreciate the previous, and, you know, before and after. It's very important to see what we're taking out, or what we're redlining, or what the fee was, but, and I appreciate the comment on checking with other cities, we don't want to be the most expensive city around, but we want to be a city that's paid for their services, and we get paid, so.
Ideally, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're collecting those fees upfront, and that we're covering the cost of what it takes for us to do that project and get that project through the finish line and across the board. That is our main goal and objective, is not to make the money on it, is to make sure that our costs are reflective for us to do the job and do the job right, so.
Especially as much as we're doing now with inspections and tightening up the belt as far as our commercial buildings, which we've had some issues with already that you guys were involved with, but thank you, by the way, that could have been a really bad situation, but I think it's great. Council, comments for Mr. St. Ange before we go to public hearing?
No, just did, especially on the redlining and showing what they previously had, it really explains, it tells the story of where it was and what it's gonna go to.
Thank you very much. I'm sure if we need you, we'll come back up, but thank you again, this is excellent. With that, I'll open up the public hearing, and may I have any public comments on this particular item, on the fee structure? Anybody on? Nobody's there. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments for Mr. St. Ange, or any questions? Again, excellent job, looking forward to this, I'm glad that we're moving ahead and redoing our fee structures like we've done for so many other things in the city. It's very important to have the wonderful city staff that we have in order to pay for it, so, thank you very much. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution number 23 dash 63, titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laverne, County of Los Angeles, State of California, Amending Resolution Number 23 dash 33 Relative to Certain Fees and Policies for Services Provided by the City of Laverne."
Second?
Second.
Vote please? You're letting him second now because he read everything else?
That item passed 5-0.
Very good. Thank you, Fire Marshal, appreciate that, thank you very much, that's a lot of hard work, and we do appreciate it.
Hope you like your last year. Hope you like your last year.
I do.
It's a good city, isn't it? The leadership.
Are you done now?
I'm done.
He's still on. Mr. Johnson, you're still on. We now move to other matters, the first matter on the agenda is appointment to the Active Transportation Committee. Mr. Domer, can you please lead us through this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a single vacancy on the Active Transportation Committee. As you remember, probably now, two and a half months ago or so, there were two other appointments that were made, since that time, one member has resigned. The item was advertised, and I'll admit right now, it probably wasn't advertised as well as possible, but we're fixing that. But the other reason we didn't advertise it is because we had still that active list, so there's three members on that from the original time, they went through the public hearing portion, and those three members are still interested in serving on the Active Transportation Committee. So, what we ask for right now is just a nomination of a person to do that. If there's a second, then there'll be a vote. If that applicant gets three affirmative votes, then that position is filled, and that's the end of the item. If that person does not get three affirmative votes, then we'll seek another nomination until we get three affirmative votes for an applicant.
With that, do I have a nomination? Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to nominate Curtis McPherson.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Vote please.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that was 4-5-0. Mr. Johnson, you were...
You want to leave him off? He's just...
Yeah, yeah, 5-0.
Okay.
Affirmative for Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
For Mr. McPherson.
Welcome aboard, Mr. McPherson. Are you in the crowd tonight? Okay. We now move to our second, our last other matter, appointment of the Planning Commission. First, I would like to thank all the applicants, that was a great, great amount of people that applied for that, and I really appreciate that. I will name us to serve for the City of Laverne, the Planning Commission as being a member, as also councilmember Lau was on the Planning Commission. It's actual discretionary actionability, that is, they can make a decision on an item, and unless appealed to the City Council, the action's final. Planning Commission also makes very substantial recommendations to the City Council, and so these decisions about what we appoint are very important to all of us. And one reason why we wanted to have all the councilmembers present for this was the appointment, and I thought that was a very good idea. As a member, I think it was Ms. Beauchamp, had said that we should all be here to make this big, this is a very, very big appointment. Mr. Domer, can you please provide staff report on this item?
Yes, thank you, this is for the Planning Commission, as you stated, there are two seats available at this time, there was an advertising period for it, we did have a very large candidate pool that has, it remains at 10, the 10 candidates were before the City Council at a previous meeting, this meeting was continued so that all five of you could be here. At this time, it'll be much like the last time, so if there's a nomination, we'll go one seat at a time, so the first vacancy will be nominated, and at that point, if there's a second, we'll take a vote. If that is an affirmative, three votes, then we'll move on to the second seat until all seats are filled.
Council questions, please.
I know a couple of these applicants also sit on another committee, the Active Transportation Committee. If they get this spot on the Planning Commission, does that mean that they have to give up their spot on the other committee?
Yes, it does, so we only allow applicants to sit on one commission. Basically, when you are elected to a higher office, or you are appointed to a higher board or commission, by default, you give up that lower board or commission, but we would ask for a letter just stating that they are leaving for this one, so, but yes, you cannot serve on two boards, and if somebody is currently serving and appointed to the Planning Commission, they would be off that, there would be a vacancy on that board commission, and we would go through a much more robust advertising period at that point, so.
Robust. Any other comments for staff before we go to public? We'll go ahead and open up public comment, do we have any public comment on this item? No? Bring it back of the day, do we have a nomination?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, yeah, okay.
None. You get the mayor's vote, you get first.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Aaron Duffy, I think I was really impressed with her presentation, her even keeledness during the discussion, I think the ability to talk about weighing the regulatory scheme along with the values of the community, and quite frankly, I'm interested in a perspective from a young family that's just moved here to represent on the commission.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Lau.
I second the motion.
Vote please.
Mr. Mayor, that appointment was confirmed 5-0 for Aaron Duffy.
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Okay.
I'd like to nominate somebody.
Okay.
Are you ready for me? Can I go now?
I think we are ready for the second item?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to nominate Kenny Chang.
Okay, do we have a second?
Kenny was involved with Measure LV.
Yes, he's on the Measure LV committee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Vote please.
That vote is 4-1 with Crosby opposed to nominate Kenny Chang to the last vacancy.
Welcome, Mr. Chang.
So can I ask a question in terms of timing for refilling his spot?
Well, there will now be a vacancy on that committee, but what we will do is, Measure LV, I'm trying to think, when's the next time it meets? We will look at a four-week period, we will look to have the nomination to the council on the second meeting in October, or if the meeting is after the first meeting of November on that meeting, but we'll shoot for the second meeting in October, so we'll get information out every which way we can, starting tomorrow.
And do it on our council meetings, and do it on social media, and do it on our webpage.
Yes, so we'll start our first process of having a receive and file on the next item, but of course, on social media, we'll kick it out this week, we'll get it out by, today's Tuesday, Thursday, so.
Very good. I want to thank all the Planning Commission applicants, there's a constant rotation with those, and so I would suggest that please don't consider this as, I was passed up a number of times on the Planning Commission, I know how it feels, but at the end of the day, there are other committees that are be forming, and also the Planning Commission will have vacancies in the future, so I suggest that you continually to want to serve for this wonderful community grant, it is a, it's a noble cause, and you get to see what's going on, how it's done, and how the city functions, so. But I thank you all the applicants, the ones that did not get chosen, but there will be times, again, in the very near future, so. With that, we'll move to public comments, we'll open up public comments. This is time set aside for people, anyone wishing to address the City Council on items not listed on the agenda. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the City Council is prohibited from talking or engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, however, your concerns may be referred to staff or set for discussion later. And I must remind you about our decorum, let's keep it nice, we're all in the same family, we live in this community, and so let's keep it nice, we give you respect, we expect respect in return, so with that, I'll open up public comment, I have one so far, John Wilson. Mr. Wilson, come on out. It's a much bigger screen than your phone.
Well, no, opens.
Oh, it's a double?
Both, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm John Wilson, I live at 2817 Brat Street here in Laverne, I've been resident now for, I'm in my 30th year, which makes me a youngster compared to most people here in the City of Laverne. I have a couple of things I want to discuss, the first thing is the intersection of White and Bonita, whoever the contractor is that's working on there needs to be ashamed of themselves. There have been steel plates originally that were bouncing all over the place, and then they came in, they put a little bit of asphalt around, seemed to hold it down a little bit, still a problem driving through there. Then they put some slurry or something on it recently, and now you got bumps in two or three of those areas. And, you know, we all have cars that have suspensions, and tires, and things like that, and that's a very busy intersection. So I'm here to ask that somebody look into whoever that contractor is and get them to do their job and fix it. That's something that...
Public Works Director's in the crowd, she's taking notes right now.
Okay, so that's the first thing. So, I was gonna come here a while ago, but I saw it slowly moving to get better, but it seems to have gotten worse, so, that's the first thing. The second thing is, most of you remember, I came here a while ago about the intersection of Fulton and Arrow Highway, and I guess a lot of people saw me on the feed, and they come to my house, and they let me know whenever there's an accident. There have been two major accidents since then, and some people have been hurt pretty bad. I know, Mr. Mayor, you were talking earlier, earlier meetings with the people in charge of that, I guess it's Gold Line Construction's gonna put those in. By the last meeting that I was here, right about now, we should be seeing some action over there, we're not, and I would like to see if we can get an update.
I have a meeting tomorrow, I'll find out where we're at, and let the city manager know.
Because I think in the last accident, it was major, involved an 18-wheeler, and it's getting bad, it's getting, I mean, it's always been bad, I mean, I got nailed there, and that was not fun, getting T-boned there. And the last thing is, I wanted to commend the citizens of the City of Laverne, I was over when we were getting ready for the rainstorm that never happened, but I've been through hurricanes, I've lived in Florida, so getting ready is better than not. But I was over at the fire station, we were loading up some sandbags, and I only needed like three or four, because I was worried about, you know, the back door at our house, and it was really cool to see all the citizens, and we're all there together, sharing shovels, holding bags open, and all of that, and then we were watching our great fire department practice, they were getting ready to, you know, for whatever was gonna be coming down the pike. But it was really cool to, you know, be part of that and stick around, even after I got my four little ones, everybody was really working together, and I just thought that was really, really cool. And there wasn't much sand there, so I know that, I'm pretty sure it's gone by now, I think both stations, right, ended up getting their sand all used up, so whatever budget we have to get from, let's get some more sand back out there. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker, thank you. And our Public Works Director is, you wanna... Oh, we're with, May, excuse me, let's wait till we're done with public comment, then when you can come up, sorry. Any other public comments?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for hearing me, Mayor, councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem. So today's public comment is about bringing federal grant money to the City of Laverne and San Gaviva Valley as a whole. So what they've issued is the pathways to removing obstacles to housing, pro-housing. What they've seen is there's been issues with implementing affordable housing. And so what they're specifically looking for through applicants, and applications are being taken right now, is identifying obstacles and how to remove them, and they're willing to pay over $88 million in grants to cause that to happen. So one thing to, so go to the, you're on the second page, please turn to the third. One thing to do is to remind the federal government why California is such a priority. Over the past two years, California has lost over 500,000 people, over half a million people. Our population has declined by half a million people, unprecedented in our history, even through the Great Recession. The USA Today did a study in June, and they found four out of 10 Californians were looking at leaving California, were considering leaving California, and that was due to cost of living, housing prices are the majority of that. If you please turn to the next slide. So, affordable housing projects, I think we're kinda on the next slide, Mayor, please hold that slide for a second. Affordable housing projects...
I know you can see it from here.
Per unit, per unit...
We're back to the...
Per unit, hold, or have costs 730,000 to 840,000 per unit to create affordable housing units. That's two recent projects funded within San Gaviva Valley. So that grid with the colors on it, you're good, Mayor Pro Tem, you guys are good, you guys are good. Next, Mr. Johnson, please, next page. Those are the three populations within low income, by income. And so, as you can see there, only the top-income population can pay enough rent to pay just the interest on the cost for a unit, for an affordable housing unit. Now, this is the interest taken to be able to create these units by developers. So that means two of the three populations can't be served. So if you, so if you go to the next slide, the suggestion there is affordable housing is unaffordable to create for two of the three populations. So what has been done by developers is to create a mix of applications, now they serve the higher-income population the most, you know, 20 units to just be able to cash flow some of the other populations.
Sorry, everybody, you can't see these, but it's too far for you to see, but we'll put them on the counter, you wanna...
Daniel Brinhurst with your Getty's group, I apologize.
We'll put these on the counter, if anybody wishes to take one. We'll put these on the counter if anybody wishes to take one.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Your Geddes Group. Yes. Yes, ma'am. So why is that an issue? Well, if you go to this, you two go to the next slide, the slide you were just on, Mr. Mayor Hepburn. It shows an equal demand between the populations, a one-to-one-to-one ratio. So for every unit that gets made for one side of the population, it has to be created for the others. But we see that's not happening just to be able to cash flow. So what has been done, if you turn the page again, is interest reserves. So when an amount is awarded for affordable housing, interest reserves are built in. So the interest to be paid back is taken in the award, okay? So let's say with a $4 million award grant, which is common, that's over five years, 3%. This is temporary financing. That's $600,000 in interest that's just being taken in that $4 million that's going to be paid back. Well, over time, after turning that into permanent financing as well, it turns into over $1.5 million in just interest for affordable housing. And then if you take that $4 million, turn that into permanent financing as well, we're talking a $4 million award with interest built into the award turns into over $8.1 million in just interest. Suggestion here, we could probably reduce costs by using grant money to then build affordable housing instead of taking interest and using interest in loans. The next slide, the one with the arrows, the blue arrows, you'll see the steps where loans are involved in building affordable housing. It takes 104 to 194 days to go from application to award. If we remove just the steps involved with loans, it goes down to 64 days. And then from there, we also see the potential to refine the process. So if you go to the last page, the next page, the suggestion is here is please use this data to pursue the pro-housing grant, bring that money into Laverne, San Gabriel Valley. Us at the your Geddes Group volunteer our help with that. And use that grant money to disperse grants to affordable housing, consequently doubling the effectiveness of the money, addressing all three populations, reducing the process to create the affordable housing, and really address the bigger issue here, California losing people, and make California an affordable place to live. Appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me take an extra minute.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. Gabeldon.
Thank you. Don't probably normally hear a lot of this, maybe even not for me, but I just wanted to recognize Ken, because not that former city mayor did a bad job with communicating, but Ken, I do want to say personally that I appreciate the responsiveness, the thoroughness of your answers. And while we're probably not going to agree on everything, I like the idea that you explain at least what it is in the answer. So I just want everybody to know that I think a few months later, y'all did a good job. Ken seems to be our guy. On another note to process, I brought this up before, before, before. Nobody knows what the process is for any of these committees. I didn't know about it when I ran for City Council, and I learned about the rules that were accepted, not accepted, overlooked in the effort for transparency. I really think that you ought to put more time into detailing what it is the process is for every committee. I like the idea about putting it in the agenda so that it's transparent, it's clear. It's in a language everybody can speak and understand, so to speak. Because I really feel that Laverne is failing itself with the 32,000-plus people we have here, that we can't get more than one person for a committee. And I think that without a good process, you're never going to get the best people. You're just going to get people at some point. And I think Councilman Johnson, when you asked the audience, you know, would anybody step up to do that? And I said, maybe. I think my maybe is predicated on the assumption that I see other people in our community step up by you guys going out of your way to make sure that there's never only one person that wants to step up for the community. And in that, my final comment is regarding your vote tonight. I didn't like the process of how you went about picking the Planning Commission because Mr. Casha Falguita, when he put his nomination, there was almost a 30-second delay between when you, Mr. Johnson, said, doesn't he serve on that committee? And then the vote went up, and it was four to one. How do you get to a place with transparency for this community with everybody knowing who everybody is? And you go from nobody wanting to second that nomination to four to one voting for somebody? So the other candidates aside, I don't know what their qualifications are, but I think you probably made a mistake because I don't think you're bringing the best people in those roles with the qualifications required for those roles, aside from the niceties of how those people are or their perspective on things are. But I think the technical nature of the Planning Commission role, I think that was missed tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gabeldon. Any other for public comment? We will close public comment and move to council comments. Mayor Potem Lau.
Just one thing to announce that I should have probably done before, but just as an FYI, September is suicide prevention month. And I bring this up because I was recently advised that there was a student in our, in our community that attempted suicide. I'm sure it's not the first time. It's not going to be the last time. Luckily, it did not result in a successful execution of that. But it just goes to show you that mental health is still very much an issue, very much something to be thought about, and not just for the person that may be experiencing that issue or needing help, but the people around them, the other students who are friends with this person, who may not be equipped to even understand what signs to be looking for or how they can be of help. And so I think that's just really jarring for me. I have a whole bunch of, you know, godkids and, you know, nieces and nephews via friends and whatnot that are in this age group. And I think it's just a, I think it's a different time than maybe when some of us grew up. And it's just something to really think about. And so other than just letting you know it's suicide prevention month, I did also want to advise that Tri-City Mental Health does have quite a few activities and events throughout the month, educating about mental wellness, about where folks can seek help, how they can help someone if they find that they have a friend or someone they know that's having that experience. But I really do want to, you know, put out there that information so that you have somewhere to share it. I know Yvonne has quite a bit of it through the city's work with Tri-Cities as well. But I just think it's really important. It's just really sad to think about because that family is dealing with that and everyone affiliated with that young person is dealing with that. So I hope you all had a good holiday weekend and good start to the month. It feels like when September hits, it's all rock and roll from here because before we know it, it's Thanksgiving and Christmas and everything else. So happy September, and as always, be kind to each other.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Lau. Councilmember Johnson.
I'd like to have a shout out for Meg and Cody. Last week, we spent some time together looking at some areas of my concerns in the neighborhood. That included the intersection at 8th Street and White Avenue, talking to the crossing guard there and finding out her issues with motorists not stopping and just the safety of that intersection. I appreciate that. Let's see. Also going through other areas within my district where there are alleys without concrete gutters, looking at those and seeing some that maybe we can do something, others that we may not just because of encroachment issues. Also, the train tracks at Metropolitan Water District that has been talked about numerous times. And it seems like we're just waiting for MWD to get their act together to take care of those train tracks. And then some issues along Arrow Highway. I'd really love to see those lights get lit. Mr. Gold Line?
I will push. It's A-line now, sorry. That is on the list. I will say that the signal is on the list, but they were going to, you know, they can push it, but we need to push it.
But we've got 8th Street, we've got Fulton, two areas that are of my concern. And again, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Councilmember Casha Falguita.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you guys. There was approximately a couple of weeks ago, I got an email. There was an accident on Emerald and Baseline. And I understand that there was a lot of concern regarding the turn signals upon sunrise and obviously sunset where it had, traveling eastbound. When it sunrises, completely blaring, it's hard to see. And when heading westbound, the sun sets, it's going to be kind of hard to see, right? With the turn signals there. So I brought that up with our good city manager. Hopefully, he can further address what some of the concerns that I had and how we can go about fixing that. It's not just one particular intersection. It involves approximately about $300,000 to replace. Not just one, but you have to, you know, the, not an engineer, but I can figure out some sort of, it has to be some sort of synchronization between the lights. We have kind of come across. So hopefully, more, we're going to have more talking about that. And maybe a city manager could address that issue a little bit later along with, then we... So thank you for that education regarding that. So I reached back out to those families that were involved. And I'm thankful that the two girls that were involved in the accident are safe. And hopefully, they're doing much better. And we're going to see what we can do to fix that. And then I guess the lights went out on Wheeler and Baseline, from Wheeler and Baseline, traveling continuously eastbound for about another couple of lights. As far as the intersection goes, it's completely dark. Around 7:30, I had to contact our good city manager and say, hey, this is about to be a problem. You know, I drove through. And hopefully, we try to get through whatever we could. And I know, maybe you could comment on exactly what we did on that, city manager. So later on. But just want to give you a, no, yeah, just later on. But thank you for addressing that issue. It was a concern, and we're able to at least do something about that. So on that, please stay strong, say Laverne strong. And I look forward to email, comments, calls. Get back to you soon. Is that good? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you. I just want to highlight an announcement that was made earlier, too, on the Meals on Wheels. If you really want to participate, it's a really good, great cause. Really appreciate that, bringing that up to us. The Library Commission, our next meeting, actually, I did this earlier on announcements, though, is on September 20th. It's at the library in Agora, if you want to drive that far. Or they have a satellite meeting in La Puente, which that's where I will be attending instead of going out two hours away. Last week, I had the privilege of joining two of the executive team members and going to the California Joint Power Insurance Authority Conference and met with Mr. Domer today about things that I got to learn and bringing back to the city on preventing harassment in the workforce, doing investigations on accidents, and working with our service animals and pieces like that. So, and then, Mr. Domer, can you speak about, I know there was a Christmas morning survey that went out as well, so that our residents can know about that and if they can participate in there so that we can have good feedback?
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. I passed up Public Works Director McWade to answer to Mr. Wilson's ask about those steel plates. Did you want to comment on that before I go to my comments? Make sure the boss has a chance to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, and thank you, Mr. White. Basically, it's a gas company. They're doing utility cuts there. The project is not all the way finished. And right now, we're negotiating kind of payment limits with them, but the intent is to try to have them fully pave it so it gets restored.
Thank you very much. That can be very, very dangerous if they don't countersink them and properly asphalt them, especially when they flip. That's dangerous. So, okay. Thank you. Just, I appreciate the council for filling in for me when I was on vacation, which was a wonderful vacation. Thank you. My wife is extremely happy we got out of town. But I also want to thank staff, all of our staff, police, fire, public works, community services, community development for, even though a lot of the public, you know, comment was about the storm coming in Hillary, that, oh, my gosh, it was just overrated. And there was no, hey, I'd rather be prepared. You look at, you look at those poor people in Maui, Hawaii, and how that has devastated a whole state for years to come, places that we've, most of us have probably been to. And there was no preparation. And that's what happens with no preparation. And I want to say that, you know, even though it didn't happen, but we were prepared for it. And I think that's the most important thing. All of our catch basins were checked and cleared. All of our areas were cleared. Public workers out scanning to make sure that the water would, you know, escape. And, you know, you have to be prepared for these kind of disasters, no matter if they happen or not. But if it's a possibility, we want to be prepared for it. And I really appreciate that staff did a fantastic job. And Mr. Domer, excellent job also. And I did also get a comment. I was out of the country, but I was contacted by a number of people that they were very concerned about the traffic signals. And, you know, you're going to comment on it, that we don't have a battery backup system on those. And they went out and they were dark. And that's very dangerous, very dangerous. And I know a lot of comments, a lot of people were speeding through there, not stopping. And it's like, okay, come on, people, you know. But Mr. Domer, but again, thank you for staff. Thanks, council. You guys did a great job in my absence. And again, it's nice to go out of town and have a good vacation every once in a while. But we do live in a very wonderful city, and I'm very blessed to be able to serve. And I really appreciate staff's help and counsel. Mr. Domer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If I miss something, please remind me. I'll get to it. So I'll try to go through these. First, on the baseline Wheeler outage, yeah, thank you to Cash for, Councilmember Cash Falguita, for giving that information to me that day. Learning that we had a very old policy here regarding outages at intersections. And basically, it's because under state law, if there's an outage at an intersection, the lights aren't working, everybody is supposed to stop. But we know that's not always the case. And so we always want to ensure safety. But the policy was set forth because of an event 10 years or more ago where there was an outage. The city did put out signs. But then Edison, after they restored power, did not let us know. And there was a resulting crash. So the city attorney at the time opined that, no, we're going to go with state law. We're not going to put out signs, so there's no conflicting. Understanding when I got called, and then starting contacting our city attorney and our Public Works Director and our Acting Chief of Police to find out what was going on, the duration of the event and all that stuff. It was supposed to be until 5:30 in the morning. So it was an extended period of time that coupled with the streetlights off, we needed to do something. So in talking to the city attorney, she also agreed that, no, we can put out signage. But to double sure that, you know, we were safe and all that, contacted our Southern California Anderson Governmental Affairs rep, got his assurance through talking to him on the phone, an email that he had reached out to his maintenance people that were on site so that before they flipped the switch, they would call our watch commander's office, alert us, we would be out there within five minutes to remove that signage. So it all worked out. It all was seamless. We got it out there. From that, we are going to change that policy and look at it. But more importantly, I've asked for a review of all of our traffic intersections for battery backup. So in some cases, battery backup is, I was talking to the city engineer about it today. It's fascinating when you dig into these things about, you know, and some of the cabinets and the different numbers that they are and the different standards, whether it's a county standard or state standard. And the, think of battery backups right now commonly is a car battery or multiple car batteries. But now they're getting into some non-lithium, they're nickel lead, I don't know, their batteries that fit in. And so our goal is to get that assessment done and get battery backups because it's better to have a flashing red or any powder outage than anything else. So that's our commitment to our residents on that and to the council. On the turn signal and left turn, again, we inherited those signals from the state when we took over Baseline. There is no warrant based on accident data and all that stuff for that, but we will explore what it does. As Councilmember Cash Falguita said, you know, you'd think, well, you just put in another, put an arm on, a longer arm for a left turn signal or something like that. We're looking into all that because more than likely, we'd have to place the entire turn signals and all the poles there. turn signals and all the poles there, and that is a costly endeavor. But we will look at that, we're identifying some funding that goes along with Baseline for that purposes. On the Christmas morning survey, if you go to cityoflaverne.org backslash Christmas morning, it'll come up on the Christmas morning page, which will have some information, and then it'll also have a survey. It's a non-scientific survey, I'm going to warn you of that, but it gives some background, asks some questions, asks about volunteering, asks about different issues, and it's all data that we'll bring back. Our goal is on September eighteenth to have another study session on Christmas morning with the council.
How many people have, we were saying that earlier, what's the number of people that have already submitted?
It's about two hundred and fifty, which is great, so.
Do you know if those are individual or people that are multiple?
Well, we do know that we, they are individuals, yeah. We have the system so that, you know, it throws out. Yeah, so you're fifteen, one of them counts, so.
You're fifteen?
Yeah.
One of them counts.
But I do want to tell you that you can do that for perk your parking, and you do it every day.
Emails for.
Yes, yes, so, and please do that, so seventy-five thousand dollars goes a long way towards an inclusive playground, so. So ask that you please check out that site and fill out that survey to provide us, again, input. It's not that if there's fifty-four votes here and forty-eight here, we're going to go with the fifty-four, it's input for the city council to understand where the community is thinking. Also on that, on study sessions, please contact me at kdomer@cityoflaverne.org if there's something about a study session you want to see, if there's information on committees. Still reviewing the committee structure and looking forward to having a study session on the committees and looking at a different committee, commission, board structure for the city, so that is something. But if there's other things regarding how the city works, city government, anything like that, as Mr. Gavaldon and some others know, I like answering emails and I like being technical, because I think it's, it's the dorkiness in me, it's the same thing with the Public Works Director McWade.
We have another word for it, but we won't use that.
You talk to her, and she'll give you very dorky Public Works explanations, but they're very good. So that's the thing about staff, and again, thanking staff for the storm preparations. Not often that you get so many people on a Saturday afternoon, you know, on a Zoom, talking to, it was like COVID times again, but staff was responsive and out there and making sure that we were there for the residents. And the number one lesson we did learn is we had a lot of sand, more than others, but we needed more sand, so.
Never enough sand.
No.
Moral of the story.
Yes, so I think that's it, unless there's more.
One quick comment, I know that we've discussed this before about the safety issue where we had the horrific accident on the curve on Baseline Road. I know that there's, and I think this is direct to you, Mr. Domer, but also our Public Works Director, I know that there was, it has to do with Caltrans and also the county of Los Angeles, that area there, kind of one of those areas where we have unincorporated, we have Los Angeles County. I think we need to make sure that we look into that again, that has to do with the Hanes and that area there, and the safety of it, and the turn, and I know that it's something that kind of went cold a little bit, but I think we need to figure out with LA County where we are with that, and figure out how they're going to turn that over from Caltrans and now that, you know, people in place. I think it's important that we revisit that, because that was a very horrific accident, and we don't want that to happen again.
Yeah, and that will be another study session annexations, because that is a topic. We do have control of Baseline that was ceded to us by the state many years ago, but, yeah, that area is a mismatch, because in some points, we have, you know, the southerly portion to the center line, the county may have the northerly portion to the center line and other things like that, so it goes back and forth, and I think that curve is currently county, so, you know, whether there's signage, the arrows and all that stuff.
We need to hammer that out, because it's been a long time, and it's very unsafe, and those people come whipping around that corner, and especially with Hanes, which is a wonderful, wonderful place, but the point is, is there's a lot of employees there, and it creates havoc for a lot of those people, so, just FYI, if we could look into that, and let's figure out something to make it safer in the short term. But other than that, any other items with that? This concludes our council meeting, I want to thank everybody for attendance, and everybody be safe. Our next regular scheduled, actually, we have a study session on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three at five-thirty PM. Is that a closed session or a study session? Study session. With that, we are adjourned at eight-twenty-six PM. Thank you all.